All right, we'll call our meeting to order at this time. It is very nice to see so many of you are here tonight and we celebrate and honor Mr. Ferbey. And at this time, I'll call our meeting to order and I would like to offer an invocation. When I finish, we'll immediately stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we just ask that you would continue to bless us in this season, the Christmas season where we celebrate the birth of Jesus the Christ. Just ask God that you would grant us wisdom, to have patience, a patience to listen to you and wait. Wait for you in your own time. Grant us the courage to acknowledge who we are, and not only that, but whose we are. Be with those, Father, that have lost loved ones or friends throughout this past year, as the holiday season can seem lonely and difficult for so many. We would just ask that you would help us to realize how precious each and every day is, every life has meaning. We would just ask that you would help us to be able to live each day to its fullest as it could very well be our last. Father, we pray for those in our community that are struggling to meet their everyday demand that this earthly life demands from us. We just ask that you would help them, help us to be able to reach out to them, help them, help them to be able to reach a level to sustain their needs for their families and themselves. We ask all of these things that we have mentioned in your name, your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Our next order of business, item three, is to adopt the business agenda. We can adopt it as is presented to us. If there's any changes that need to be made due to any conflict, we can let those be known at this time. So it will be appropriate at this time to call on a member of the council to approve the business agenda.
Mayor, as my last official part of the duty, I would like to make a motion to adopt the business agenda as presented.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ferbey to approve the agenda. Do I hear a second to his motion?
Second.
I have a second one by Councilwoman Bryant. Is there any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or say no, the agenda will be approved by Mr. Ferbey. Thank you, Carl. Our next item is to install the newly elected officers that we have. Some are taking the oath for... Some are taking the oath for a second time, maybe, I think, a second time for everybody. And we have the honor tonight of having our resident Superior Court Judge Brenda Branch to come forward and do the oath for us. And Judge Branch, if you would come forward and... Does the council know which way, I think clerk told them how they were going to do it?
They, they do.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much for doing this for us.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Mayor Doughty and City Manager Trey Hand, Attorney Davis, other members of the city council, ladies and gentlemen, other elected officials, thank you. It gives me great pleasure to be here tonight, to participate in this event. I understand your work is so very hard. And for that, I'm honored to be here, to be a part of. You have so much to do and so many decisions to make. And so, I'm very, very proud that we have such people that want to continue to serve and new people that want to serve. So thank you for allowing me to be here on this evening. Thank you. Tonight, we will present oath of office to Ms. Sandra Bryant. You will place your left hand on the balaclay, raise your right. If you would and if you so agree, you will say aye do at the appropriate time. I will read your oath. I solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as councilmember of the city of Roanoke Rapids, on which I am about to enter according to my best skill and ability, so help me God.
I do.
Thank you. You are so, 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 I'm so proud of you. And I have signed, if you will sign here. So ladies and gentlemen, I present to you our councilmember for second term, Ms. Sandra Bryant. If you'll get her. And next, we have Mr. Rex Standback. I have worked with Mr. Standback for years. We started together, and so I know how hard he works. So I am so excited to be a part of this for Mr. Standback tonight. I will read your oath and at the appropriate time, if you agree, you can say aye do. Do you, Rex Standback, do you solemnly swear or affirm, I'm sorry, place your left hand on the balaclay, raise your right. Ready? Got to get it right. Do you, Rex Standback, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as councilmember of the city of Roanoke Rapids, on which you are about to enter according to your best skill and ability, so help you God.
I do, y'all.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Congratulations. I present, I'd like to sign here. I present Councilman Standback for, how many times now?
One and a half.
Oh, one and a half terms! And we'll call forward now our new member, Mr. Warren Keith Bale. I have known Mr. Bale all of his life. We grew up together. We had fights together, actually. We were in church and Sunday school together. That's how long I have known Mr. Bale. And, and he taught our children as well. So it gives me great pleasure to be a part of this tonight with his wife, Ms. Diane Bale. And so, if you would, place your left hand on the balaclay, raise your right. At the appropriate time, if you would, say aye do. I'll read your oath for you. Do you, Warren Keith Bale, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and maintain the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as councilmember of the city of Roanoke Rapids, on which you are about to enter according to your best skill and ability, so help you God.
I do.
Congratulations. Congratulations. You're getting ready for third. I was asked to get this done and go, and so I follow orders when I'm here.
Well, you're welcome to stay as long as you like to, but we thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I would now have the distinct honor of reading the resolution for Mayor Pro Tim Carl Ferbey. I'm not going to make him sign up, come back, or anything. You can come on.
You know what, a little while ago, I said, nobody really knew my wife, so this time I want to make her come up with it. She's the one that's got that long list.
Okay. This is a long proclamation call. This is from the city of Roanoke Rapids, a resolution honoring Mr. Carl Ferbey. Whereas it is fitting that the city council should pay tribute to the exceptional citizens who have distinguished themselves through their impeccable service to the citizens of Roanoke Rapids. And whereas Mr. Ferbey was born August the first, nineteen hundred and fifty-three, in Moyawat, North Carolina, he is a graduate of the Joseph P. Knapp High School and Elizabeth City State University. He has resided in Roanoke Rapids since nineteen seventy-nine. And whereas with great interest in the welfare of the community, Mr. Ferbey began his public service with the city of Roanoke Rapids in nineteen eighty-eight, where he was serving on the Roanoke Rapids Area Planning Board for ten years. Six of those years, he served as the chairman. He was also served on other numerous boards and committees. And whereas in the year nineteen ninety-nine, Mr. Ferbey was elected to his first of six consecutive terms as a Roanoke Rapids Councilmember representing District Three, Minority District that was established in nineteen ninety-one. Carl served as council-appointed Mayor Pro Tim since February two thousand and eight. He was also the council liaison on the Roanoke Rapids Library Advisory Committee, the council representative on the Upper Coastal Plain Council of Governments Board, and the North Carolina League of Municipalities, the Board of Directors and Finance and Legislative Action Committee, and the league's affiliate group, the North Carolina Black-Elected Municipal Officials. And whereas in twenty twenty-three, Mr. Ferbey announced he would not seek a new term as the District Three Councilmember after twenty-four years of service, and now commemorated the longest-standing elected official in the city's history. Mr. Ferbey's colleagues and fellow residents of the Third District assure that he will not only be greatly missed, but will also leave behind a superior standard of service to the public that will be hard to equal. And now, let it therefore be resolved that the members of the Roanoke Rapids City Council on behalf of themselves, the citizens, and the city employees, hereby express their deep gratitude and commendation for Mr. Ferbey upon his retirement from the Roanoke Rapids elective office, and they sincerely wish him and his wife Donna and their family much happiness in this next phase of his life. Therefore, let it be further resolved that this resolution would be presented to Mr. Ferbey, and a copy of the resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and to the news media on this day adopted, the fifth of December in the year two thousand and twenty-three. This is a plaque that's being presented from the city of Roanoke Rapids. It's got a clock on it. I told him retired people don't need a clock. Anyway, this one got one on it. It's actually got the right time, Carl. Presented to Mr. Carl Ferbey in recognition and appreciation of your service on the Roanoke Rapids City Council this day, December the four, no, I'm sorry, beginning December the fourteenth, nineteen ninety-nine, through today, December the fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, from the mayor and the city council of the city of Roanoke Rapids.
I guess, I guess I'm in the citizen's side now, so I got my three minutes, he said. So I won't take three minutes. You all heard me a little while ago. Really been a pleasure serving this city of Roanoke Rapids. And sometimes you do things and you ask yourself, would you do it again? My answer is yes. So that's, that's my answer. I've, I've enjoyed. There have been times it's been tough, you know? But at the end of the day, I think I have, hopefully, been a voice for those that didn't have a voice. So again, thank you all for working with me. I enjoyed working with you. And I'm not totally finished yet, so we'll, we'll see. But thank you, and thanks so much.
Enjoy it. Thank you, Carl. Our next item of business this afternoon is to, um... Wait a minute, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Yes, ma'am, you told me that, and I still forget it. We need a motion to adopt the resolution for Mr. Ferbey.
Mayor, I'll make the motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three point one nine.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Bryant. Do we hear a second to her motion?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Smith. Is there any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion will be carried. Thank you. Nobody on public comment? Okay. The next item is the election of a Mayor Pro Tim by the city council. I've had to do this several times, but do I just call for a motion, for somebody to make a motion? Is that the process we've been following? So I would open the floor for nominations or make a motion for an individual to serve as the Mayor Pro Tim.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, please.
Councilman Standback?
Would like to nominate Wayne Smith as the Mayor Pro Tim.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Standback for nomination of Councilman Smith to serve as the Mayor Pro Tim. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
I think I got three then. I'll give it to Mr. Ferbey. Mr. Ferbey has a second. Is there any more? I'm sorry. Okay. Take a recess. Mr. Bale, I mean, how you been here forty-seven years? Give me one, give me one, one break. Okay. Mr. Bale, Councilman Bale. All right. Got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, no. Okay, now we'll move on to item eight, approval of the city council minutes. We only have one meeting, November the eighth, twenty-three, a regular meeting. Someone feels so moved, they can make a motion to approve them.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the November eighth, twenty twenty-three, city council meeting minutes as drafted.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Bryant. Do we hear a second to her motion?
Second.
Who said that? Okay. A second by Councilwoman Strickland. Any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Minutes will be approved. On the new business, calling fire chief. A budget ordinance to purchase fire equipment.
Mayor and council, as you all know, we've been talking about these new trucks that we've ordered a couple, about a year or so ago. It looks like now we're going to be getting one a little bit sooner than we first anticipated. I think it was originally scheduled to be like the end of the summer before both trucks would be here. But a couple months ago, we received notice that one of them will be here in January. So we're in need of going on and purchasing the equipment so we can go ahead and get it ordered. Some of it is, is an extended time period. I believe a couple of the items, like the fire hose and things like that, are almost twenty weeks still. So it still may not be here by the time the truck gets here. So tonight, we're here to ask for a budget ordinance to purchase the equipment for the first truck. And as, as we discussed the last time, when we ordered the, both of the trucks, one of the trucks, we will not have to order equipment for, at least not as much of the equipment, because we will be taking the equipment off of the truck that we will be replacing. So I guess I'm just here to ask consideration or motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three sixteen for the purchase of the fire equipment, which comes up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I'm going to apologize for my...
That's all right.
I just want to add to, the hundred and fifty thousand budgeted is what we, we expect it will cover everything without any surprise increases having to come back to council. So we don't think all of it will be used, but we wanted to have a little contingency due to price fluctuations going up and so forth, so.
Is this money already budgeted in this year's budget?
No, it's not.
Where is the money coming from?
It's coming from the fund balance, unassigned fund balance. And that's been our plan since we ordered, or since council took action on the trucks themselves. We said we'd come back later with the equipment. Look back at minutes from, I guess, May of twenty twenty-three meeting where it was discussed in, or, excuse me, before twenty-three, and it was discussed that...
Twenty twenty-two, I believe it was.
Yeah, you're right. And so, we've been anticipating this for some time, but we didn't expect the truck to come up so soon. So we wanted to make sure we got that in this fiscal year, and now we needed to timely order the equipment to go on the truck.
And what is that going to bring our fund balance to, minus the two million that we're going to pay on the theater?
Uh, we, I don't know the exact figure, but we closed out our June thirty, on June thirtieth, we closed out with a forty-seven percent unassigned fund balance ratio, so.
Did that forty-seven percent include the two million dollars, though?
No, it did not.
Did not?
That's, that's correct. I think the rest of the payment we will receive from the grant will be three hundred and fifty-seven thousand upon delivery of that second truck.
That'll come in twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
Unless the truck comes in early, yes, sir. Unless, you know, we get surprised like this truck was and it comes in early. But right now, I think last I was told by the, by the salesman, we're looking probably around August on that second truck.
And what, what type of items do we anticipate for emergency, response to emergencies?
Um, assortment of fire hoses, nozzles, power tools, hand tools, radios, thermal imaging cameras... cameras.
Well, I see all that that you got in there, but then you said other items such as need for effective to respond to emergency.
Just whatever we normally put on the truck, I mean, for any type of emergencies.
There is an inventory sheet that we have that has been provided.
Oh, we're talking about rescue equipment?
There will be some, yes, sir.
Some minimal.
I missed this while I was up, but when will you have to spend this money? Do you just need to get it allocated tonight or approved?
We need to, the sooner the better to start getting it ordered. Like I mentioned, some of it, like I believe the fire hose is one of the most, what's going to take the longest to get at this point, and I think the last I heard was a 20-week turnaround on that. So that's why we need to go ahead and at least start pushing that forward to try to go on and get that order.
Could I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
Also too, so this bus is a, I mean, it's a truck, a fire truck is basically like a stripped down model and you kind of add everything to it as you get it?
Yeah, the way a fire truck works normally, you order the truck in general, which comes with your fire pump, lights, the whole nine yards like that. Then you have to have all the equipment which goes on the truck that you have to order separately. Now, you can do it all in one package, but normally, some salespeople can sell you this at a different price than this, so we're going to do our best to try to get the most bang for our buck and get the cheapest as we can, to be the most cost effective as we can. So what we will have to do is place orders at different vendors to try to.
And could I ask Ms. Trainham one question, because I had read over this. As far as the reimbursement for the funds from FEMA, how soon or how many days, 60, 90 days, whatever would it take before, once we put in for the reimbursement, we'll be reimbursed for the funds?
In past incidences when we've gotten grants from FEMA, it's been like maybe a couple of weeks. It hadn't taken long. Now, this amount of money, you know, I'm not sure, because before, the other grants that we've gotten, we've gotten a little bit at a time. This, that will be a big chunk of money, you know, 300, which to the federal government, I know that's not a lot of money, but you know, to us as is. So, but in the past, the grants that we've received, it's been pretty quickly.
And you have our assurances that our finance director will be right on top of it to make sure every dollar is collected. It depends on the federal timeline of submitting your requisitions and then their reimbursement process, so.
No, you're looking at always, I know that the federal budget year ends September 30th of this one.
But the grant, it is budgeted, the funds have already been allocated.
And just as a reminder too, and I know, Mr. Bell, you're new to the process with these trucks, and we've already received one draw from that truck, which I believe was $119,000 when we placed the order for that truck. Now, keep in mind, that's the second truck, but we've already received some funding for that.
Could I ask a question, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So if the delay time on the hose is 20 weeks?
Yes, sir.
And if the truck's coming in January, does that mean it'll be four months before it's really operable?
Could be.
How long does it take to outfit the truck once you get it?
Once we get the equipment in, we're going to have some stuff that'll be installed at the dealership, which is in Rocky Mount, and then the rest will be installed by our guys, the equipment mounted and installed, just as a savings cost. And then as the equipment comes in, it'll be placed on there. We're hoping that maybe the hose can get here a little bit sooner, that way we can go ahead and put that truck in service sooner than later, but you know, we're at the mercy of the supplier.
Could be April before it's really ready to up and run.
I would hope not, but it very well could be, I guess.
Right, okay.
The adoption of the budget ordinance is necessary for us to even be able to place an order.
I got you, right.
Any other council members have any questions? The fire chief?
The emergency equipment you're talking about, does that include Hurst power tools?
There will be some power tools, yes, sir. Not necessarily Hurst, but.
Can I answer your question, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we're getting into heavy duty rescues, what I'm worried about.
That's not our intent here. It is primarily for the responsiveness and emergencies.
As a backup.
Well, I would ask the fire chief, is this new truck going to have any additional equipment? Maybe this is in relation to Mr. Smith's question, that the old truck did not. I know you're going to have new equipment, but is it getting more?
No, it'll have the same, it'll have the same thing that the current engine that they're on right now out of station two, but it'll be battery operated, it will not be hydraulic, it will be battery operated.
Okay, if no one else has any additional questions, we're back to, we don't have a motion yet, do we? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2023.16, an amount of $150,000 to purchase fire equipment for the new fire truck.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman, mayor pro tem, Smith. Do we hear second to his motion?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Bryant. Any more discussion on the matter? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion will be approved. Thank you all.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, chief.
Congratulations to you three.
Thank you.
And Mr. Farabee for his retirement.
At this time, we hear from Ms. Trainham, the city manager.
Good evening, mayor and council, and welcome aboard to our newest council member. Just a few things going on, just want to acknowledge that we've had, just coming off of a very busy weekend, welcoming and preparing the city for the holidays. On Friday evening, we had Christmas on the avenue, despite the weather forecast throughout the entire weekend, it was very well attended. Christmas on the avenue and all events were, including the parade on Sunday as well. I'd like to acknowledge our staff and thank them for their hard work and diligence in that, because decorating and getting things ready for even at your own homes is a lot of work, but when you're putting things up around the city and so forth, it takes a lot of team effort and that work, and so I do appreciate our staff for being able to do that, because the lights, the Christmas lights bring a lot of joy to many people in the community, especially those who may not even have a tree at home, but we do wish everyone a blessed holiday season and a safe one. That's one thing we say about the Christmas parade, with all the logistics, it's like operating an orchestra, many things that go on, a lot of people that show up at, you know, for the parade time, that's just their part, but it starts months earlier and on Sunday, it starts very early in the morning, preparing for that. So I'm really proud of our staff for working hard and their dedication to providing a safe event for our community. Few other things going on, speaking of employees, our Christmas luncheon that council members are invited to attend will be on Wednesday, the 13th, next week, from 11:30 to 1:30, so our facilities will be temporarily closed during that time to allow employees to participate in the Christmas luncheon, as well as the service awards that will be provided based on tenured experience. Would like to acknowledge the presence of Kristen Anderson here tonight from the planning department. Kristen's been with the city for 10 years now, and so she is literally my right hand in the planning department, I'm left-handed, so she's been my right hand for a long time, and I'm proud to say that she's going to be serving as the interim planning director probably for the remainder of the fiscal year at this point, until we can assess the department needs moving forward. So we thank you for doing that. And then also, our next meeting will be on December the 19th, so in just two weeks from tonight, we, so far, we have a CDBG grant public hearing that is scheduled for our 2020 grant, and also a presentation from the fiscal year 23 audit from our auditor, Greg Redman will be here. Speaking of kind of like the theater debt, since that's come up a little bit tonight, finance director Carmen Johnson and I, we've met with a couple or a few different financial advisors in the last month or so about what to do, kind of just trying to get some ideas about what to do with the $2 million from the sale of the theater, and looking at the financial picture right now, and pretty much all three have concurrently said, right now, we're doing the right thing, keeping the money in our NC cash management investment. And probably in the springtime, we need to look at some other options as interest rates may begin to change at the federal level. But right now, we're doing very well revenue-wise, keeping that money in our cash management account and gaining that interest on it as a revenue source to the city. So again, we will continue to talk about the theater debt and so forth, but we'll do that after the first of the year, as we go into the springtime, and start looking at the upcoming fiscal year budget. It'll be here before we know it, so that's all I have to report at this time, unless you have any questions of me at the moment.
Questions of the city manager?
Last question I've got, only have we talked to the people that we normally handle all this through the Bank of America?
Yes, we have.
Okay, and are they willing, have they given us any advice on what we need to do right now?
Well, right now, well, we haven't spoken with anyone directly at Bank of America. We've spoken with our advisors who have worked with us since the theater financing package was originated back in 2007, and so, but we've kind of left it at, right now, the money's in the right place to earn that interest, but advise that probably in the springtime, keeping an eye on the interest rates and so forth, but then also finding a time when the interest rates start to come down to negotiate with Bank of America, because there's a high level of confidence that our interest rate would, if we were to refinance our current debt, the interest rate would exceed the 2.54% that we're currently locked in on.
I'm not suggesting that we refinance the debt, you know, I'm just, I would like, you know, I want to see this money put on the theater. I want that debt for the theater to disappear, and that's what I'm interested in really. I don't want it to be spent on something else.
Well, if you think about it in a way that with our current revenue income that's coming in with that money in the savings account, it's helping to cover our balance right now, our quarterly obligation.
I understand, I understand that, and I don't mind it staying in the savings account, getting the interest rate they were getting, but if they drop the rates, start dropping the rates, then I would be interested in us going ahead and paying, you know, on the debt.
Absolutely, but we won't take any actions without council's involvement.
Thank you.
You had told us too, that we had to check and make sure that there were no prepayment penalties or anything of that nature. You know, we got to make sure we're out for money, any kind of penalty. The other thing is, we had talked about trying to negotiate some.
Yeah, but I think in our contract, we had a two-year limit on prepayment, wasn't it? The last agreement we had with Bank of America? So that has passed by.
There, we can, it has matured, so we could pay it off early without penalty at this point, but if we were to just send $2 million to Bank of America tomorrow, the payment would go, would be applied to the back end of the loan, not, so we'd rather responsibly have it applied to premium or principal only and not interest, so.
But we also have talked about trying to plead our case, so to speak, about what good stewards we had been about paying that money when it was so difficult for us to do that in hopes that they might shed some grace on us and give us some write-down on that money.
That's reason we need to start negotiating.
Well, city manager and I have had some discussions about that, and she has told me that, you know, they would start looking into that.
And we discussed with one of the financial advisors who's been with our, along since the origination of the theater loan, talked about coming to city council and doing a presentation in January, so just probably about a month away now at this point, once we get through the holidays.
Just before I ask, is there anything else that needs to come before us tonight? City manager was talking about the parade, and I don't think you said anything about what happened with the staging of the parade. Did you mention that in your report? Anyway, I just want to say what a, it was an innovative move and it had to be done quickly on the spot. It was literally, when I hung up the phone and was informed that we could not use the meal parking area over there to stage the, however many units we had, and you know how many we had, Larry? Units in the parade, you got any idea? It's usually, it's 100 plus, I guess, but anyway, a lot, yeah, but anyway, so I called the city manager, and I think she used the word big three times. She says, like a big, big, big problem, but we'll get it done. So that's the kind of thing you like to hear, and so immediately, the phone started lighting up, and I don't know exactly how they did it, but they got everybody, I guess, had a place to land, and we had the parade, and everything went off without a glitch or a hitch or whatever. So very thankful to Public Works and the fire department, I'm sure was involved in it, Park Recreation, the sheriff department was out there, highway patrol, and everybody, everybody just came together and made it all happen, so very thankful for that. The other thing I would say, she did mention your name, Ms. Kristen, in the report, and I'm proud to say that people that come to planning, they said, that girl, that young girl that works up there, I don't know what her name is, but she helped me a lot. And that's some of the best advertisement that we can get in the city, is when people come away, especially when they come to planning, they're usually not real happy. You know, they got to pay for something, or either they can't get what they want, or you know, they just, you know, so sometimes you can do a good job and they still come away unhappy. But a lot of people come away and they say, you did a good job, and if you couldn't do what they wanted, you say, but maybe we can do this, and you, you know, that goes a long ways too, to try to help people if you can't let them bill what they want to bill, you give them some suggestions. So I thank you very much for that, it makes us all look better. And then the last thing I would say is that we know that we have a lot of people in need in our community. I know that the church that I attend has two families, that they are going to make sure they have a good Christmas, so churches I have been in, sometimes people would say, well, you know anybody in the church needs anything? Nobody needs anything, but there's people out there that do need, so I think there are churches and people, you know, just people that are willing to step up and do things to help people in our community if you just, you know, let it be known. And so I would appeal to you to try to do those type things in the next, you know, two or three months, especially people that have children and that type thing. Child should not get up on Christmas morning and not have something to look forward to. So anyway, anybody else got anything?
Mr. Mayor, I want to add one comment about the West Point Stevens property for clarification on the record, in case anyone's listening, but the situation, what happened on Saturday morning, in fact, we were walking into Walmart for Christmas with the kids with the police club and received a phone call, and it wasn't, we were told we could not use the property, the transfer of ownership had occurred on Friday, and so we weren't in the, less than about 24-hour timeframe, we knew that it would be highly unlikely we would be able to get the new owner's permission to use that property in a short amount of time, so that was primarily the issue there, so thank you.
Anything else before call for a motion to adjourn?
No, the only, Mayor, I'd like to thank all of the people that worked for the city for the job that they did on the theater, and I'd like to thank the police chief for what he did for the children in the area, and his whole organization. It means a lot when people, you know, come to you and tell you what a good job that the city did, and I had a lot of comments on the parade, the city really put on a good parade, and that's thanks to the employees. I appreciate it.
The only problem I have with the parade is when I drive my truck, everybody says, look at the truck, look at the truck. They never say anything about the mail, they just say, look at the truck. Or either they say, that's Lauren, that's Lauren. Anyway, it was fun. Okay, we'll call for a motion if nobody has anything yet. Yes, ma'am. You did, and somebody else gave me a hot dog. Anyway, let's call for a motion, we're getting out of order. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Smith, we hear second to his motions, second by Mr. Steinbach, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, we stand adjourned. Thank you all for coming.